Our mayor's out tonight. He has some, uh, he's got some health issues, so I'll be standing in for him tonight. And I'm gonna ask KD if he would to open this one.
He will. 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 Father won't thank everyone that come out tonight. Father asks you just do what does is we make the decisions for this city, for making this city. Father asks you just look into each home that has sick and shabby people. Ask you to just watch over them, protect them. Father asks you to protect all people in this community and all the communities in this place.
Okay, I think the first item on the agenda is Mr. Bob.
Mr. Anderson, uh, board members. Sorry, I'm gonna get my act together here. Uh, it's good to see y'all tonight. Um, the mayor is not on the phone, correct? Am I?
No, Amy's on the phone.
Amy's on the phone, okay. Uh, it's good to see you all tonight, um, in, in the unusual times, and I appreciate the opportunity to spend just a few minutes with you. I'm not gonna take long. Uh, what I want to do is get the matter of New Albany Next on the table before the board, uh, and make a few remarks about it. I know you don't want me talking for 30 minutes, or probably 20, or probably even 10, but I'm, it's gonna take me about 10 to do it, 10 to 15. Um, so, just as a reminder, what we have before you, uh, before the board for action, uh, is the New Albany Next Comprehensive Plan. And, uh, we started this process with New Albany about a year and a half ago with a community meeting. New Albany was, uh, uh, trying to determine if it needed to update its plan, if it was useful to take a long-range look at the city. You had all these questions going on, and we held a community meeting and, and tried to provide, um, uh, information to help you make that decision. You ultimately elected to proceed with a planning process. Well, my group, the Orion Planning, uh, Orion Planning and Design, has been in New Albany ever since, working on the plan. It was about a year ago at this time when we had our intensive effort, we called it Planning Week, and, um, that came after we had done a series of community meetings. Uh, we had Planning Week, and we have now drafted what is in final form, the New Albany Next Comprehensive Plan, and I'll just, uh, uh, remind you of its contents in just a moment. But through that process, we have, uh, I should say, New Albany has expressed itself as hopes and dreams, desires, um, uh, about the future of the community, and those have been captured in, in the New Albany Next Plan, and, uh, we have, uh, uh, we have compiled that, and we have it before you for consideration. So, in the process, I, I've, you've heard me say this before, and I'm not just being flatter, it's not just flattery. And we, we, New Albany is a, an exceptional community in our part of the world. Uh, there is more energy and vibrancy going on in New Albany than many, many places we go, and we go to a lot of places all over the country doing this. And I want you to know that, and I want you to know it because you have a, an exceptional community to work with and an exceptional future to think about. And that's why it's important. The Comprehensive Plan sets the tone, sets the tone and tenor, the general direction for the community over time. You say, how does it do that? Well, it's already seeped into a number of initiatives, and the plan is not even adopted. Uh, I'm just sitting here emailing a, a gentleman down here at Three Rivers who's working with an industrial prospect. The industrial prospect wants to know, is there a Comprehensive Plan for New Albany? Yes, we got it fresh, it's hot off the presses, it hasn't been adopted, but here you go. People take note of that. That's an economic, um, uh, uh, matter that's very, very important for, uh, New Albany's future. There are other aspects of the community that the plan will influence, and that is, um, the way commercial areas develop so that they're vital over time, so that they don't spring up and then weather and die, or you have unattractive places you're grappling with over time. It guides that. It guides the way the historic areas are redeveloped. Um, it guides the way the corridors, uh, will appear as they enter into town. There's lots of impacts that the, the plan has. Uh, you've got the river running through town, which is a unique feature that almost no community has, and the National Park Service is all over it, trying to help New Albany think about what that space would be like over time. And they're referencing the New Alb, work in, uh, in New Albany Next. Uh, Brownfield's, uh, EPA process, uh, was, that was utilized by Three Rivers to help spur that. That will continue on, is my point. So, it's very important that a, that a very, uh, well-done plan be considered by the city. One of the more fundamental aspects that the plan does is set the basis for rewritten, uh, development code. So, you, we know that you, when you ask us to do the plan, we, you also, uh, put in our, how does put in our scope rewriting your zoning code, and, um, and I certainly don't have to tell you the importance of that, but the, the code, uh, is intended to implement or align with the Comprehensive Plan. So, I overtalked that to say, what you've done is very important. You have a quality product, in my opinion. It's been before the Planning Commission. I don't intend to go through it in detail tonight, uh, except to say that, uh, you've got a document that assesses, uh, statistically assesses the community where we say New Albany Now, in the discovery section, we look at population and land use and all the development trends, and a lot of market data there that was analyzed. Uh, we had a, a great community-driven vision. We had multiple input sessions. We had an advisory group that was very strong, met multiple times to help us in this process. And then we have in the, uh, in the plan that, that what's called, you know, the city is mapped out in its ideal future. And then very, very imp, uh, we, back, one of us, that we, we picked out focus areas downtown in the riverfront, the Health, Health District, Wellness District, Carter Avenue Corridor, infilling the historic neighborhoods, and then how you deal with new neighborhoods. Those are particular focus, uh, uh, elements of focus in the plan. And then finally, the, what we call the New Albany Next Action Agenda, which is the implementation piece. It's, it's a matrix of strategies and actions, but it's not just strategies and actions. How you measure it, uh, who might you partner with to achieve some of these items, um, and, uh, some very specific ways of implementing the plan. That's about as far as I'm gonna go with the description of it, other than to say, I've already sent you a link, uh, other than to say, this is the, this is the product that you have. Uh, it's, it's graphic, we think it's graphically interesting. Uh, people can pick that up and understand and get a sense of where New Albany has been, where it wants to go, and where it, uh, where it will go over time. Those were some of the folks that were involved in the, in the input sessions, the, the planning principles, um, all the way through. So, um, and then we get into the land use elements. How should the various, uh, parts of the city develop? What are their ideal characteristics? We call them place types. Um, and if you participated in this process, you, you know, uh, kind of what that's all about. So, flipping through that, uh, we dealt with mobility, the greenways, the strategic focus areas, there they are, from, from new neighborhoods, Carter Avenue being an important area, the health and wellness area, uh, downtown in the riverfront being vital, and then the north side infill and the cultural arts area. All these are, have detailed design treatment as a vision. Um, and then as, as you recall, we'll follow, or as I mentioned, we'll follow this up with the zoning code. So, my, and this is, the plan concludes with, as I mentioned, the Action Agenda, and this is the matrix of, of strategies and actions. Now, the first one on the list of strategies for this plan is to adopt the plan. It's got, it needs to be officially adopted. We've been before the Planning Commission, before all the lockdowns and the, the virus. Uh, they, Planning Commission is sending it to you with their recommendation. Um, Eric's been involved in that process. And so that's, without going any further with it, um, that's where we are. I'm bringing you the, the document, the plan. Uh, we're ready to ask you to adopt it, uh, and, uh, and we're moving forward with the zoning code rewrite.
Any questions for Bob, for anyone about that?
I would, I was asked, let me preempt a question. It was a great question. How does the plan position New Albany among the best communities around, other communities that are thinking, uh, uh, in positive ways about their future? And of course, we did the work, so I'm a little biased, but I would say that the, the plan sets New Albany up as, as among the top-tier communities in, in its, uh, in its size in our region. It's just, it's, you've done good work, I should say. You should be proud of it. Questions?
You said you sent us a link.
I did, yes sir. I had a new computer, and I sent it garbled message the first time, and I resent it with an apology, 'cause I, I wouldn't have my email right, but I can send it. And by the way, newalbanynext.com, um, is live. The website's still live, and there's a link on there. So, newalbanynext.com, or I can resend it to you. Mr. Conley, if, uh, if I need to.
The one I'm looking at came from Allison, Allison, M-O-U-C-A.
Allison Malk, that's one of our partners. Don't know, what's it say?
It just says Orion Planning Design, and that may be the reason, the key. You might not recognize it.
Don't open anything from Allison. She had a virus. She had a vi, don't open that, and it went to everybody on her email list. Um, you should have one from me.
Yeah, uh, June 1st, when I, when I show.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that was the same. Yeah, same thing. So, that's, that's your link. That'll get you this document. Uh, peruse it and...
So, are you asking us to adopt it tonight? Is that what you?
So, uh, uh, you have to adopt it, uh, uh, after 15 days' public notice. So, I don't know if we had to, if we utilize the Planning Commission notice or not, but, uh, I wanna get it, so in that case, I wanna get it on the table. And then perhaps a next meeting, or when you're ready, let's get the advertisement done, and then, and it's ready to adopt. And then we'll be back not long after that with, uh, rewritten land development code or zoning code.
So, Reagan, what would we need to do?
I think, uh, I believe he's just asking you at this point to set it for next month, and let's get the public notice out at the end time, so we can adopt it.
Yeah.
So, we need a motion to that. So, I need a motion, as you said, next month. So, give it there, make a motion. Any questions, discussion? I'll look for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate all your work, man.
Thank you.
Bill, like asking more. Can I just tell everyone, we have masks here for anyone that wants one. Uh, you can pick one up if you wanna use one tonight while you're here. We wanna be sure and make those available for you.
Thanks, John. For one?
Oh, the first three items I have are pay requests, dealing with the wastewater treatment plant, and maybe if we could group those three together, uh, if that's okay. One is to Hemp Hill Construction, forty thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars, ninety-nine cents. Uh, one to K Jack's Construction, they're the one doing the main work on the, uh, the dirt work and plant construction. It's a million dollars, one thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and six cents. I'm not used to reading numbers quite that big. Uh, the third one is to ESI, that's our engineer on the project, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that, everything has been reviewed, uh, by the engineers and submitted for approval.
So, do I have a motion to pay these three, just one group if we can? Any questions, any discussion? I'll look for you. Any opposed?
The set, next item as well is item seven. Uh, during the month, we, uh, I guess we polled the board members by email about a couple of items that we needed to, to get moving. Uh, number four, the, the city of Amory had a failure, one of their substations had a switch that, that failed, and some of the storms we had in early June. Uh, we so happened to have a, uh, these are kinda long lead time items, you can't just go buy them off the shelf. We actually had one we were gonna replace in our Blue Springs Substation, we were gonna wait until the fall to replace it. Uh, so the city of Amory asked if we would sell them, or let them have that switch, and they would buy us a replacement switch. Uh, and to do that, I think we needed an emergency declaration for the, 'cause we were actually gonna purchase a switch, Eric's gonna pay for it. Uh, so, I asked for approval to sell our switch to Amory, and then to let us, we, we contacted the manufacturer, we, we just bought the switch last year, and they were okay selling us one at the very same price. So, we wanted an emergency declaration to make the purchase, and I guess approval to sell Amory that switch. And we got that through the, through the email vote, but I think we need to formalize that tonight.
Yeah, that was just a notification.
Yeah, you said we formalized that vote?
Yes.
Have a vote. Any questions, discussion? I'll look for you. Any opposed?
John, I'll skip down to number seven, 'cause that, that was kinda been that same, uh, discussion that we, we had, um, sort of in the middle part of the month. We, we had advertised to get kind, uh, a contractor to finish up some gas main construction on our bond project in Union County, and we had, we had three bids, two of them were just really close, and, again, there were some, uh, circumstances for, where you, you really could've waited either one higher than the other, and we talked to both contractors about it, and we decided, we, we, our recommendation, our engineer's recommendation, was to do a joint award on the contract, to award to Paul Smithy and AHS Construction. Uh, AHS is a group that's, uh, I guess we're located kind of between New Albany and that crew. Uh, we've, yeah, Inglemar and Inglemar area. We've, we've really not done a lot of work with them. They did have a lower bid, but they don't really have any gas experience, but they are somebody who's kinda close by, and we think, uh, in the future and down the road, they could be somebody that, uh, might be a good partner for us down the road. We would like to get them involved, get some experience, and then Paul Smithy had a really competitive bid, and we know Paul can do the work. So, we, we recommend the joint award on the contract.
And, and, of course, you know, you gotta think, agree with both of them, they're both, both okay with this. So, I think the bids were not, all the projects as whole, they were like all from our own.
It's like unit prices, yes.
So, I mean, you're really accepting their units, as you're saying.
Yep.
Accepting the work and the process.
Do I have a motion for that? Question by Will. Any questions or discussion? I'll look for you. Any opposed?
Uh, I think our fifth item, uh, in our electric department, a couple of years ago, we had a group that helped us, uh, with our right-of-way trimming on the electric lines. Uh, historically, we, we, we have a right-of-way crew, and that's all they do every day is go out and trim. And historically, in the, kind of the shoulder months, when, or as we were heading into winter, things kinda slowed down, we had all of our line crews, they, they would get out and trim lines as well. But the last several years, we've had so much construction work and growth, the line crew's not really been able to put much time into the trimming. So, we kinda got behind on, on the right-of-way. So, we brought a contractor in to help us catch up, and we, we bid it, basically, we paid them by the hour, and, uh, we used them for about a year, a year and a half, and did not really like the result we were getting for what we were paying. So, we, we ended that contract, uh, in hopes, they, they did make some progress on the lines, and we hoped we'd be able to keep up with it moving forward. Uh, but we're just, we're, we're still losing ground with the, with all the rain, and just the weather we've had. It's just incredible how much of the trees and the undergrowth are growing. So, what we'd like to do is advertise to get another group in here to help us, uh, maintain the right-of-way. We're, we're gonna bid it a different way this time. Instead of more or less an hourly rate, we're gonna identify the circuits that we need trimmed or made, you know, that we need them to go out and help us, uh, I guess get caught up on, and we'll just get them to bid, uh, basically by, more or less by miles. It'll kinda be a unit-type pricing thing, like we did on the, on these other, like this gas construction contract, it's a unit price. Uh, anyway, we, we've talked to some of the cities that bid it that way recently, and they've gotten some better results, or they've been pleased with what they got. So, we'd like, uh, permission to advertise to get a, um, electric right-of-way clearing service.
Every day, I'm gonna have a second. Second question. Any questions, discussion? I'll look for you. Any opposed?
And of course, when those, you know, once we get the bids in, we'll, we'll bring them back to the board and get approval before we do anything with them. Uh, the sixth item is part of our electric bond project. Uh, we have some upgrades to the northwest substation that went on Butler Street. Uh, part of that, we're gonna be installing a new circuit breaker there. We'll need to order some material, uh, to get the steel, to basically the steel structure in place to accommodate the circuit breaker. And, uh, we are gonna need to advertise, the price we anticipate we're gonna have to advertise for that material. I'd like to get permission to advertise to purchase that material.
Have a second. Second, second, Will. Any questions, discussion? I'll look for you. Any opposed?
The, the last item, John, this is one that's kinda a late addition for him, but I've talked with y'all about it. We had an employee that resigned yesterday, and we're trying to get somebody in fairly quick to get, get trained, so we don't lose, uh, uh, we just don't wanna lose much time with it if we can help it. Uh, we'd entered, we, we just filled a couple of jobs there, uh, in the last two months, and we'd interviewed a pretty large pool at first time, and we'd like to, uh, recommend one of the folks we interviewed out of that group. Uh, her name is Jessica Crumpton-Deez, she's recently married, just for a cashier position at the electric department, or in the, at our administrative office.
Do I have a motion to fill that position with Jessica Dee?
So, ma'am.
Question by, second, Will. Any questions or discussion? I'll look for you. Any opposed?
John, it's okay, I may, I was looking at the Action Agenda, and there's a couple of items over there that are kinda related to what we talked about. And, you know, I think we've probably proved this three or four times, it seems like. Maybe it's just different, different things. It's so hard to get bank accounts set up now, but we, we do need a separate account for the bond money. And frankly, if I'm looking at the trial, I think I have the right top of the agenda. Item D is to open the account, and item E is to approve the signers on the account. Uh, if we can, if y'all want to, we can go ahead and get that out of the way. Like, you know, that's gonna relate back to us.
Yeah, I, just to clarify, I think, uh, believe item D is to open the account and deals with the signers as well, all that one account. I think that item E is to verify who the signers are on.
All accounts, okay. Okay. Yep. Well, then on, on item D, uh, for that bond account, um, the, the signers on that are myself and the mayor, uh, our office manager, Andy Dillard, and our accounts payable person, Christie Davis, on that account.
Yeah, it requires two thousand and four to sign.
Question by Will. Have a second. Second, Kevin. Any questions or discussion? I'll look for you. Any opposed?
Yeah, and, yeah, Reagan, I, I agree. He is to clean up. I guess we have a, there's just had a bunch of accounts over the years. There are a lot of different signers, I guess, that appeared on those accounts over time. Some, some are, probably some of them's not even still here that are on there. So, they wanted to clean up all the accounts that we have at the bank. And, again, our recommendation was to go with those four signers, like me, myself, the mayor, uh, Andy Dillard, and Christie Davis, and it always requires two seconds.
Do I have a motion to, have a second. Any questions, discussion? I'll look for you. Any opposed?
All right, um, I mailed, um, all of you our reports earlier in the week, um, but tonight I come to you for a discussion about moving forward with Riverfest, um, and the plans for that.
And Billie Jean and Tracy and I spoke just a few minutes ago about, uh, what our plan might be for Riverfest. It, it's sorta hard to predict what it's gonna be like in September, but do we, do we wanna look at just doing maybe just the music part, or the music and the, the food service part, or the vendors, food service, and so the full thing? And I don't know that any of us have a good idea of what that might look like, or what, what the decision might be, and it could change, I realize that.
It is an open venue, so we're not, you know, in a closed-off room. Um, schools are opening back August, you know, so it's important to our merchants downtown and to our restaurants, too. This festival brings, you know, a lot of people into their shops and into their restaurants, so.
I think the, the part that maybe is most concerning is, well, I'm leaving this wrong way, but the people that do come in from out of town, who have they been around? Is that gonna expose people from here to something? So, I don't know. I think it's something we, we need to discuss tonight, 'cause they need to know from the board what direction Tracy and Billie Jean need to go in. So, I'll just open it up for discussion.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, I, um, I think we definitely, I mean, I feel like we should go forward in planning, but I do think we should have a COVID plan, um, you know, like the, either really she can crazy consult with local healthcare people, or we have some kind of COVID plan. Like, right now, I'm opening up my clinic, and I, um, my, I have to have a COVID plan for my bosses in order to open. So, like, what is the COVID plan? So, as long as we have a COVID plan in place, I would think it would be fine to go forward. We just need to know what we're doing in order to kinda try to be, say, prevent the spread.
I know our talk, last time, we talked about the entertainment and our commitment to them. What else are we, like, let's say we get to the point of Riverfest, and we can't have food vendors and other vendors?
That's okay. I mean, we'd have to return their money to them, I would guess, or...
Just their money that they...
Yeah, their fee for whatever, if they're vending, but you know, um, we started talking about it today, but we really couldn't move forward until we knew whether the music was secure. Um, but I'm okay with a COVID plan. I'm okay with not having vendors down the middle of the street. Maybe no kids zone this year, just have music and...
How long, what's the, the last date or drop-dead date for, like, vendors? I mean...
Oh, gosh, they called two days before.
Yes, yeah, and they're calling. So, they're, they're calling now, so, um...
We wouldn't necessarily have to make a decision, I don't, with vendors.
No.
And we could, part of the plan could be, if you want, if we start getting vendors, typically they prepay us. If we wanna do it where, when you come, you give us the money. That way, we're not writing a bunch of checks back out to people to refund, I mean, we can be as flexible as needed, so.
As far as entertainment, is it still, are they still on board for coming?
Oh, yes, they are. It's a Mississippi artist. I mean, I'll tell you who it is, it's Steve Azar. He's a Mississippi country artist, but he's from the, you know, he's a Delta guy, and, yeah. So, yeah, they're still on, yeah, and we're already a month behind paying them, but they were okay with that as well.
Okay.
So, Billie Jean, what is the impact for our local merchants if we don't have the vendors in the street? I mean, is that good or bad?
It's a big, I mean, it's a big, I mean, it's a big time for them, you know?
What I'm saying is, if we have the music and we have food vendors, but we don't have the vendors in the middle of the street.
You'll still get some traffic from people coming for the concert, you just won't have that 10 to 6 traffic that's concentrated downtown.
And that's, is that the most important part of our...
Well, I mean, yeah, it's a big day for them, it's a very big day.
So, we still, we haven't, at the park?
So we still have it at the park?
Park on the, yeah, park on the river. You know, we did the fireworks.
Is there any way to spread out the vendors even more? Like, I mean, I know, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of ways to spread it out more to create more distancing or something. Because the, the music's going to bring a huge crowd and it's going to be really hard to control distancing at that. I mean, people are just going to, you know, we can encourage it and we can tell people to wear masks and we can try to set up six feet apart situations, but it's going to be really hard to control that. But with the vendors, if we set them, I don't know, just thinking it's spread it out further. Anyway, as long as y'all have a plan, I think we should go forward with planning is my feeling.
That consists of both.
Is that, yes?
I think we're good.
And we will work really hard to get you a plan, a COVID plan and work to make it the safest way.
You know, I'd just say that, you know, this is our plan right now. That's subject to change depending on circumstances, you know.
The fireworks, I will say, last, last week, I mean, people really were not sitting on top of each other. They were in their cars. They really, people know, by now people know what social distancing is. Yeah, all right, thank y'all.
Thanks, Billie Jean.
Chris? Did you have something left?
No. My, I just need to break the board on two, two things we got going. One is Ann Creek, more just returning. Has basically, New Albany is going to host him, but he is in all on fourth lane, Susan, inside his district that he deals with, is sponsoring Jeffrey Artis, who's former FBI. In the last 10 years of his career, he retired two years ago. In the last 10 years of his career, he dealt with race crimes, hate crimes, and that was his thing. He's going to come do training here in New Albany. We're going to host it at the civic center and use the mask and sanitizer and all that stuff. And it'll be basically a block in the morning, a block in the afternoon, de-escalation training and culture diversity training. And this turns out it's going to pay for that and we're going to host it, so.
What date is that?
That's going to be July 30th. The board is welcome to attend. I think we want to get started around 10 a.m. and then I think the afternoon block's going to start. So it'll be 10 to 12 and then back to one, one, two, three. Jeffrey Artis is a, is a, is a great guy. I've known him for several years. We met for a myriad of different kinds of training circumstances years ago. He's good at what he does and I think it'd be good for, if y'all want to stop by and listen to see some of the training that he's putting out there, that's, that's one thing. Other thing is, as you all know, we had a break in down the street at the gun store. One of the officers that was involved in that, it was the key to kind of getting those guys stopped. We have warrants for one of them. We've identified one of them. We're not quite ready to release that yet. We're still working with the gang in Memphis and the US Marshal Service. So I told them we hold off when folks see that they're actively searching for that individual. But in that, that instance, we had one of our vehicles take a lift from Holly Springs Police Department. Both officers were injured. They're still, I didn't check with Dwight. Have you heard about him?
Yeah, he had ten statements.
Yeah, I was with him. I don't know if he's back at work. I hadn't talked to Dwight. Our officer's still not back at work and he's probably going out to have several surgeries, so that's still kind of there. But the vehicle that he was in, we got the estimates back this week and it's about $14,000 worth of damage to the vehicle. That being said, the last chargers that we purchased, the used ones from Missouri, were 17, 17.5, 17.3, somewhere in there. So I'm, my suggestion to the board would be to scrap to total vehicle out. Even if they spent $14,000, there's no 100% guarantee that everything is going to be, that's just what their estimate was. Once they start going in the vehicle and tearing it down, it may be more, it may be a little less, I don't know. But at $14,000, when I can buy, you know, theoretically can buy a new one for about 26 or 27. I can buy one that's two years old for about 725. The money, what we would spend may not be worth it in my opinion. But I did want to bring that to board and I have, I could email you the estimates and let y'all consider yourselves. But that's kind of where we're at with that right now.
Are you planning on going with the two year old vehicle?
Well, we're so, the other question is, it's kind of close to budget time. We're limping by right now. I know that things are different because we've had to have shutdowns. So I, that's, whatever the board, and we talked about that, but I am going to have to have a vehicle at some point. It might not be right this second, but in the future for sure.
So what's, what's the board wishes on that?
Let me ask you a question first. The agenda says emergency purchase, purchase. So are you asking for this like an after procedure?
Well, I just, when I told Ms. Frankie, I said, I probably need to bring the board up to date on it. May, I may, she may have misunderstood me. I didn't explain it clearly.
So you can follow the business also, not have to go around.
Yes, no, we're, I'm basically just trying to bring the board up to speed on kind of where we're at. Because we got the quote back basically this week.
And we don't have a vehicle budget to discuss.
That's correct.
So what's the, what's the will on the board?
People, you plan on buying another issue of media or charter?
I'm, to be honest with you, KD, I'm, I'm probably stuck on the charter, the all wheel drive chargers. They seem, we've seen kind of found the niches and forever with Crown Ford, Crown Victoria, not the board about it in running, but for law enforcement, forever it was Crown Ford, Crown Victoria. In certain mileage, you knew what the typical problems want to be. We've like got that multiple chargers. The oil dry capability makes them ideal in handling. And when we have the, once or twice a year, the snow comes around or the rain comes around, it all helps them. So that's probably what I go back with. I know there's some new things come out, but we found what the problems tend to be with those chargers and I'm comfortable with that. They seem to be working well for us and that's how I'm happy with it, so.
Can you get the two year old or no?
We, we checked and think that they'll have some available here in the next month. It is typically a pretty quick turnaround. Those two states, what happens is they require, there's Missouri, Missouri and Kentucky, thanks for the two. We've been getting hours from Missouri. Their state, Department of Public Safety, whatever their acronym is, they require all their state vehicles to be turned in at 50,000 miles. And then they have a shop, the state owns a shop and has state authorized technicians for those. So we talked about state contract vehicles. It's going to be a Ford, it's going to be Dodge, Chevrolet. Well, they've got trained technicians and once those vehicles are turned in, they're giving them 100 point inspection down the windshield. And if there's any problem, they fix them and they put them out for resale. And we've had good luck with that so far.
So that's not a budgeted item, so we would have some.
I just want to kind of make the board aware that's where we're at.
So are you, are you asking us to?
Not necessarily not, because like I said, I just wanted to let you know. And I know the budget talks are coming up real soon and I don't know, I know things have been a little different.
Okay.
We're trying to limp through best we can.
Thank you, Chris.
John, more? Got just a couple of things. First thing is, I'm going to ask to purchase a replacement hydraulic pump for our, like what everybody knows the jaws of life. The other pump was damaged, not damaged, but just wore out and quit working on a, on an incident on the four lane. And so we took it in to have it repaired. And the cost of repairing it plus the history of it, and it's between 11 and 12 years old. It's really too small. It's just, it's not going to be worth it for us. We're still going to have a 10 or 12 year old piece of equipment. And so I've priced a new one that is more user friendly. It's bigger, we can use more tools with it and we can have it serviced locally. The way it's designed, it's got less moving parts. So I need to, I need to permission to go ahead and purchase that.
Are you going to purchase it out of the fire station?
We are.
Okay. I have a motion to, to have a second. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Second thing was, we just wanted to acknowledge one of our local businesses for stepping up during a time of need. We had our dryer at Station One, clothes dryer, go out and we needed one really bad. I went to price them and while I was there, Wyndham TV and Appliance told me, they said, look, said we've got one. We just brought in on, on trade. He said, nothing wrong with it, but if there is, we'll fix it and you can just have it. And so we just wanted to acknowledge one of our local businesses for stepping up and helping the fire department when we needed something. Thought it was really nice.
Anything we need to do?
No, I'll, I'll send a letter of appreciation. And then the official notification of our class four rating, like I said, we did drop. And I did personally talk to an individual that did talk to their agent and their insurance did drop. So I encourage everybody to let everybody know that you need to contact your agent. Now, you know, it may not drop this time or it may, you may have to wait till it renews and it may not drop at all, but it's worth, it's worth the time to talk to your insurance agent and see if you can benefit from it. There's a lot of things that go into this class four and when we start ready to go into budget time, you know, we'll talk about some stuff they're looking at. We've got some things coming and I really want to wait a month or two before we start really talking about what we want to do. We do have two grants out and one of those grants could affect what we want to do for the future of the fire department. And I did receive an email this morning on one of the grants we're working on for the cancer prevention equipment and they're asking more information on environmental protection. And so a lot of times when they do that, then there's usually some, you know, some good news coming later on. They, they took the time to ask us some environmental protection questions. And so we'll, maybe we'll know something on it within the next month. So any other questions?
We appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark.
I emailed y'all the monthly report. We didn't have a zoning meeting this month, but I, I emailed y'all the first of June and telling y'all that we was going to have a zoning member roll off in September. So we need to really be thinking about a member. I have a couple of people in mind, but I'd like y'all's input also on that, so.
Will you share the ones you have in mind maybe at some point?
Yeah, I will, I will. I'll send y'all an email out on it, so. Also, I'd like to set a public hearing for the August the 4th meeting to condemn 530 Church Street. I've sent letters. They received the letters, but we've got no response from them. So the power's not been on in 10 years on this property.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I see it, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, I think we're down to our dis routine business items. Approval correction of our claims document for June 2020. I have a motion to approve that.
So, ma'am.
Motion by, he, have a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Okay, and then approval of our June 2nd minutes. Motion by Kevin Day. Have a second. Second, all with. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Right now we're over to our action items. Food for order. So Reagan, I guess I'll let you make that.
Sure. We, we basically rewrote it entirely. We took safety and tried to make it as short and user friendly as possible. Billie Jean, Tracy and Eric called, took part in that. And we offered it last time. I mean, you could, you could vote to amend the previous one with this one, but it's just, it's such a new draft that we just think you should just offer it again and start again. And that way the public will have time to look at it and we can bring it up next time or anytime thereafter.
Okay, so we need action, but.
One person will just offer it in writing. We have a copy here for anybody who wants.
Have someone to offer that. So that's, that's all.
That's all we have on that today.
John, will you repeat what you wanted to, I, I was sitting near the panel. What did you say?
That we're just offering it tonight and Keith, Keith basically made the motion or the request to offer it to the suddenly, and then we don't have any action to take tonight.
Okay.
Oh, Eric, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay, street overlay discussion. I talked to him about this today and I haven't heard or seen anything since we met last month, but I know we all have streets that were on that list and we wanted to get overlaid or cape sealed. He did mention that the group from, that does the cape sealing, that he contacted Barrett, I believe is the name, and he said it might be September, October before that crew comes into town and then they'll do it all at one time. But as far as the paving, we probably need to go ahead and authorize Johnny Payton to contact Bobby or whoever we need to contact. And I just wanted to put it out there because I don't want it to get cold and we have any streets overlayed.
So did we get a final, what streets, the paving piece of it?
The ones I'm aware of are Carter, Highland, Moss Hill Drive, and then I wasn't sure about which.
Did Neil? It's in Brandon subdivision. It cuts through. It's got a bad spot in it. It's a short road, but it needs completely overlaid and several hatching.
Now, think on Highland, what he said that he was going to get Johnny to do is take the milling machine and mill out where they dug it out, mill that out and fix it and sort of spot pave Highland. I don't know if it's going to have to be completely overlaid or not. Amy, do you know? Amy, do you know if Highland is going to be completely overlaid or just spot paved?
Say it one more time, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, do you know if Highland is going to be overlaid completely or just spot paved in those areas?
From what I understand, he told me it was going to be that, just overlaid on that part where it's rough, you know, like that side part. So I think just spot is what I think, but it's that whole, you know how, you know what happened on Highland, right? Like they came up and, so it's just going to be that whole, that side is what I understand. But he, I thought he said, it's not going to be completely overlaid, is not what Tim said. He didn't think it needed that.
Okay, okay. So I'll contact Johnny tomorrow and just ask him to get with Bobby and let go ahead and get that done on Highland. And then, you know, I'll tell him to go ahead and get the list from Ally or whoever and go ahead and start on these streets because, you know, we need to be paving, well, weather's pretty, I think.
I agree.
Yes, definitely agree.
And then again, the way we had discussed this in previous meetings, which each board had streets that you guys turned in, obviously I don't have streets. I know that I had talked to some people and I believe it's yours and maybe yours on Owen Road. You know that spot right there where they had miller used to leave it?
It is on the list.
Good, okay. Anything else about the streets that we need to talk about? Okay, the next item is item C, engineering proposals. Basically what we're doing is we're the, what do you call it, Frankie? The point body, I guess if you will, for the engineering proposal. Because something about the county's, what was it? The audit was still delayed, so we said we'd take the point on that. And so the county has, I think we've received some engineering proposals and I don't know if we need to open those tonight and give the names to the board members and let them write the three. I think there's three, if I understand it right, that have come in. So how, how do we handle that?
I would say go ahead and announce who they are.
Okay.
And if it's not something you can do in very quick amount of time, just take it into consideration and say, well, we'll come back to it.
Get back to Frankie maybe tomorrow or sometime, okay. So you've got a list there. So you've got a list there.
Is there a timeframe as far as them, on this particular one? Do they need that?
Can I come by and pick mine up tomorrow?
Yeah, you can. Frankie's got some actually copies. And basically, it's just, we might even fax you one or email you one. But the three that turned in videos or proposals were Williams Water Engineering out of Maven, Mississippi. And Allen and Hochel out of Memphis, Tennessee. And Elliot and Britt out of New Albany, Mississippi. And we rank them by qualifications, experience, capacity, and then their total. So we've got the sheets there in front of you where we can do that. And then Amy will either get you one or you can come by and pick it up.
Okay, if y'all, if Frankie can email it, that'd be great. If not, I'll just run by. Just tell her and let me know what I need to do.
She's going to email it to you.
Okay, sure.
Did you write those names down or she needs to fill them in? Uh, Amy?
Are you talking to me? Yeah, I'll run them down.
Okay, all right. So y'all get those back maybe to Frankie before the end of the week. I think that'd be good.
Okay.
Okay, next item is item F. Approved municipal court debt collection list. Submit letters to MIC and Department of Revenue for collection of debt due to the late fact.
Something we do every year since they allow it. The team that puts the list together.
So do I have a motion, we do that?
Okay.
Motion by Will, second by Kevin Dale. Questions or discussion? All in favor? Any further? Motion carries. The next two are abhorrent tax exemptions, I think, for all the industries in Kansas, Carolina.
I think these are the last two. But I'll have to check with Eric, see if there's any strikers. But bottom line, these are, they've both been approved by the tax office now.
Okay, can we do both those?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we approve those?
Something?
Motion by Keith, do I have a second? Second, are we? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Any further? Motion carries. This is just like my daily sleep, so I would say. I saw, I have all the agenda, other than consider executive session. I'm not sure.
Can I add one specific thing from the agenda? I just wanted to make, say something.
Okay.
I had several constituents, and I talked to the mayor about this, and I know you all have too. But, you know, since the last time we met, the state flag has been changed. And I've had a lot of people message me and ask me when, if we're making a plan to take the state flag down off the city hall and if we're going to do the courthouse. And I just think it's important for us to make sure the paper says, you know, we as aldermen are not responsible for the courthouse flag, the supervisors are. But we are responsible for the city hall flag. And as far as I know, it will be coming down this week, and it will be going to them. So I just want to make sure that we just kind of make that statement. You know, somebody makes that statement. Because people really want to, they just ever ask me and they want to know. So I thought that it would be important to say that publicly.
Yeah, I talked to Tim about that today. And I think after the governor signs that, if I understand it right, we have 15 days to do that. So we've got until July the 15th. And Tim said that we would take the flag off the pole and either retire that one to the museum or one of the new ones to the museum for, you know, historical reasons.
Right.
So it is in the, it is in the works, so.
Okay, okay. Just to make sure. And then one other thing, and I think, well, I'll just, I'll wait on this one. I'll wait on this one, that's it.
Okay. Okay, exactly how to order that. Someone may be able to tell me, but. All right, so I'll be make sure that we can go into executive session. And then somebody can, if I have to do that, that's what it is. One thing you can go into executive session for, or go into executive session for something else, by the way? It's all here, so it's just the whole thing. Anyway, one thing you can go into for is to discuss whether or not you could be in executive session for that matter. But I can get you a quick answer. We'll just follow it for a second.
You know what, Johnny, I have a question for Reagan. Can I ask one more thing?
Yes, you can. He's looking up something, so he's going, he's got to multitask. Go ahead.
Okay. Are we still under emergency order, Reagan?
We've never declared that the emergency is over. My best recollection is we piggyback the governor and all of his, well, at least most of his requirements kind of had time and time and went away. But we never have said we're out of the emergency.
So if we're still in emergency, if something needs change in the way we do things, the mayor could just do that, right? We don't have to vote on it, right?
Right, he can. I think he wants your input, but he, yeah, he has the power down.
Okay. I'm just checking to see if we're still in a state of emergency.
Well, I really don't see any grounds for going out on this issue. I could play it to you, well, since I have the knowledge about it.
Yeah, just go ahead. I don't play this injury, you want to say.
Yeah, I assume there was $5,000 tourism money that goes to the master gardeners, which is where the farmers market every summer. They're still having the farmers market, but they're having it under an alternate form. Set of big groups are kind of scattering now. But what happened, the master gardener is no longer associated. They, basically, the people who ran that have retired, and they don't want to do anymore. So they're not, they don't want to be the ones to run the money through. And of course, you know, my wife kind of runs the market at some level. They found a different group that's willing to do it, which is the Vicki Smith Foundation. That's Michael, who has the, what's the name of the business up there?
His wife that passed away.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, the business he owns? I think he took over his wife's nursing home, and he's got the Decatur yard.
The Decatur yard I'm talking about. Yeah, so they have an interest in gardening through Decatur yard. And so that's their interests. They said they'd be happy to cooperate with them and be the ones who accept the money, even on behalf of the market.
And what we did on this is we appropriated the money to master gardeners for the farmers market. And now, that's disbanded, if I understand it right, master gardeners. We hadn't given them the money. And now we've got another group that's asking for the money. And we need to decide if that's what we want to do or not. And because it hasn't been appropriated to that group.
Who's the other group asking for the money?
It's called the Vicki Smith, Vicki Smith Foundation. And her, she passed away, and her husband is Michael Hale, who is part of the, what's that group? The, about the. Score, yeah, the score group. So anyway.
Yes, but ultimately, the money's really going to the market, not so much to.
Yeah.
It's just for the market.
So it may be something, and I don't have a preference either way. It may be something that we can, you know, we may want to talk a little bit about and decide next month. But I mean, if we're going to give the money to them, we need to make a decision between now and the end of fiscal year, which would be September 3rd.
So we can table it?
I think we can table it tonight, if y'all want to. Get a little more information about this group.
Yeah, I'll table it and find out a little bit more about that organization. A little bit more about farmers market and the money. Of course, we want the farmers market to continue, but I want to find out what that want.
Okay, so if it's all right with us, table that tonight. Okay. Anything else from anyone?
Hey, I didn't, I think everyone here spoke with somebody on the Nassau Committee about the dog park. And we budget so much money for each, obviously, each group every year. And their budget was, that was not included originally in the budget, okay? It wasn't a, it wasn't something they were going to do this year. But what they've done is they've changed and taken a couple of other things out. So there's no more money. I'm proposing that we allow them to move forward with a dog park out at, around our park along the river. People on the committee have done studies. I mean, it's an attraction. People are looking for places like that. And not only people coming through our town, but also our people in our town looking for something like that as well. Now, what it amounts to is, it amounts to, it will be in two phases. It'll be in a phase this year and then a phase next year. And the phase this year actually is just building the fence around what has been classified as where it's going for the dog park. And then also a walkway to get from the parking lot to the dog park. I think everybody talked to Jeff Olson about this. And what I'm doing, I'm proposing that we allow them to move forward with that. It's no different money, it's still in their budget. We're just doing that project, and they're asking for our approval to do that project.
They want to set aside, if I understand, set aside one of the other projects that we had originally approved and used the money for this instead.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't know if we need any action. It's already budgeted money, so.
Long as everybody's okay with it, I guess so. I just don't, yeah, I don't want to use it some energy all hit this thing.
Well, I mean, if everybody's okay with it. I just want to be able to tell them, because I'm on that committee. Represent us on that committee. I want to be able to tell them they're allowing to move forward.
Jeff, if the founder stood it right, Jeff said that they would get quotes on the fencing.
Definitely.
And I think some of it's maybe six feet, some of it's four feet. That's all I know about it.
I have one question. Do they take, do they get bids on who they're going to use? Or do they just, or do they have to be like the rest, like we do? Do they have to get some bids on certain people who they're going to use to do the work? Or how does that work?
I think that what Jeff told me today was that they would get quotes on the fencing and, you know, to, they would do the install.
Oh, okay. And this is money already in their budget, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay, yeah, I think that's, do we need to vote or no?
I don't think so, since it's already budgeted.
Just to answer a quick, a bidding question. If it is a part of the city, like the city committee, yes, they have to follow that. If we're giving money to a civic organization that's not under our umbrella, that we're just prevented to give money to, they don't have to follow us.
Okay. Anything else, anyone? Eli, you got anything? Just observing, huh?
I am observing.
All right, we'll try to head. Okay. Kevin Dale, I guess we need a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Second, are we? All in favor? All right, it will be adjourned.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you.